At this time, we'll begin our special call meeting of Lincoln County School Board. At this time, we'll stand for a pledge and then Mr. Posey will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our most gracious having Father Lord, just thank you for this group, thank you for our school system, our teachers, our staff, and our community. Lord, just please be with the folks in the path of the storm and help us make wise decisions tonight. Please be with all our athletes playing tonight, Lord, and keep them safe. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Before I get into the formal agenda on the meeting tonight, I just wanted to let everybody know that watches this on video or however they access it, that the importance, if you would be calling your legislature in regard to testing this school year. Appears the request is falling on deaf ears, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Heath, but the governor and the State Department is insisting that we testing to see what gaps are being from being out of school this March and through the current school calendar school year. I feel confident our teachers are well aware where they are behind without paying millions of dollars for testing that in all probability will not be delivered in a timely fashion if history is any record. A whole year has gone by, and by then you have to formulate a plan to meet those needs, which will take time as well. So we go almost two years to address the concerns of 2020. If teachers were relieved of having testing this year, they could focus on getting students caught up from this previous part of the year that they were out, improve our virtual learning, and incorporate the current curriculum that would not hinder them from going forward. Right now, the teachers have to focus on what is expected in testing and nothing else. What is there to gain from testing on results that will be 18 months old? This money for testing could be far better utilized in school system rather than folks that may not even reside in the state of Tennessee. I had a parent come to see me just this week in regard to the e-learning day we had on Monday, and his comment was, "Common core may be what it is, but I didn't learn that way. But nine plus three is 12. But when you spend two and a half hours with a child, and eight plus four doesn't equal 12 based on common core." That's the disconnect that we have today in the virtual learning. But where is this time to be allocated if a teacher has to have a curriculum that they have to meet because they're going to be tested on? He reached out to a couple of other parents in regard to this issue he had with common core, and their response was, "We had to go to you two." Do we really want our students learning from you two or through a classroom teacher? And again, I implore you to contact your legislature to voice opinion on testing and the ramifications it has on our children today. Without going into anything else, we'll elaborate on a resolution of the board later in regard to that, but the first item on the agenda tonight will be changes made to the reopening plan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I've shared my screen with everyone, so you should be able to see what I'm going through here. If you recall, we had about an hour and a half or an hour and 45 minute presentation the night you approved our reopening plans. What we'd like to do tonight is go back, revisit those plans, and only look at the things that have been modified. And if you remember that night when you approved that, we said that it would be a very fluid plan, and we'd have to make some changes on the fly and some changes rather quickly. So tonight, what I would like to ask that you do is, when I go through the changes that we've made and the changes that we're recommending that we haven't made yet, I would like for you to consider approving that as an updated plan at that point. So I'm just going to start through the document here. As you see on the first page or two, there's nothing, anything highlighted. There's some changes on this. You have to look closely at this, but if you can see, we have stricken through everything that's highlighted that you see right there. What that means is, we're recommending that we eliminate this from the plan. Now, what we're recommending here is that we eliminate the numbers, the .5% active cases to automatically send us to Level 2, and the .5 to .1 to send us to Level 3, you know, over a 1%, I'm sorry. So what we're finding is, we've had cases where at Flintville, where we've had several staff members, and many students quarantined because of either exposure or symptoms at the same time, and some at South also. And those two schools have demonstrated to us that we can still have school in some very adverse conditions as far as the number of employees and number of students. So we feel like that at this point, we should eliminate these numbers as an automatic lever point, and we would like to, from this point forward, to look at schools on a case-by-case basis and not necessarily a district-wide thing. You know, these numbers indicate, you know, if we'd gotten up to 173 active cases in the county, then we were to take a district-wide decision and go to a hybrid plan. Well, we don't think we need to do anything based on those cases now because we can look at each individual school and make a school-based decision going forward. Where, you know, maybe a school does have to go virtual at some point in the future. I don't know. But at this point, we're recommending that we eliminate all the terminology and the verbiage that's associated with those automatic lever points, which is this column right here in the middle that I'm highlighting, or not column, that row, sorry. But then also, on top of that, we have worked and had discussions with different groups of teachers. We have had working sessions and looked at some scenarios. On this hybrid plan, this middle plan here, and to be honest with you, we don't feel like that would be very beneficial to even have that hybrid plan where, you know, half the students go Monday and Tuesday, and the other half go Thursday, Friday. I know some school districts that started school like that. If we had started school like that, and at the end of this week, our fourth week, we would have had 20 days of school, but the most school any kid could have gone to would have been eight days based on that plan, if we had started with that plan like some other districts did. I think Giles and Lawrence are two that did. You know, kids who chose to be in person, many of them, most of them, have actually had 20 days of school now, not eight that they would have been on. So we would like to eliminate the automatic lever points right there, and then the middle column, the Level 2, the hybrid plan, from our plan here. So that's what this page represents. And I'd entertain any questions or thoughts on that before I move on, if you have anything or if anything jumps out at you.
You want to do this out at one time, right?
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, I'd like for the board to consider the whole thing at the end instead of each piece of it, if you don't mind. But I wanted to stop if you had any questions on that.
Well, the correlation is this, this is what everybody used.
A lot of districts use this.
And, but it didn't directly come down to the school. If you had an outbreak at a hospital or nursing home, a great deal of numbers are in that one deal, whereas it could skew, but you didn't have a widespread COVID outbreak. Whereas this, we can deal with it on individual school, but school basis.
Which is what we recommend now, yes. Of course, we didn't know that at the time, but yes, definitely. All right. After no further questions, I'll just move on down. On this page, again, remember, these pages each address the protocol in different areas. Again, this is just the Level 2 being eliminated. There's nothing else on this page. The next page, instruction and learning, the Level 2, that middle column, is what we're recommending we eliminate. Bus transportation. There's one change over on the left that you can see right there that's highlighted in that left column. We did make that change after you guys approved the original plan. And that was due to some safety concerns brought up from the state transportation folks, that instead of having our drivers check temperature as kids were getting on the bus, we would require everybody to wear a mask for the morning routes. And so that was the change that we made because originally, we didn't have that in there, and we were going to check temperatures as people got on. But again, highly recommended by the safety folks in transportation, and not just in the education department, but Highway Patrol and everyone else, that we don't have our buses stopped for a period of time, and that the drivers can focus simply on driving the bus. So that's a change that we did add.
Do they wear them in the afternoon?
Right now, if they make it through the day without symptoms, then we figure in the afternoon, yeah, that they're fine. Because if they have symptoms during the day, they have to be addressed at school. That was our thinking there. This next page, entering and exiting school, as you can see, the middle column again is what we've eliminated. Same thing as we go through nutrition and transition in between classes. Large group gatherings, same thing. Now, I do notice on here, this is not a change, but I want to highlight this because I've been asked some questions about this from different folks. In our original plan, we did recommend that we follow whatever guidelines the TWSAA has and TMSAA have. Going on down, no changes on the vulnerable population. Here, we have some changes. And on the left side there, staff members, the first column is they've been exposed to a positive case, but they have no symptoms. The one thing we eliminated is notify local health department because they've asked us not to. Right, Carmen? Okay, that's a change that they've asked. In the middle column for staff members, staff or student reports that they were diagnosed, but they have no symptoms. This is a positive case, but no symptoms. Again, we eliminated the notify the health department because they've asked us not. We've added notify the parents and staff. I'm sorry, is that added or...? Yes. Notify parents and staff of the confirmed case. We took out of the classroom and announced the whole school. All right, so that's a slight change. So we took out the words classroom because we want to notify everyone in the school, and we've actually worked on that a little bit today. Had a concern brought to our attention about some virtual kids that are participating in after-school activities, which is allowed, but maybe not receiving the notifications because they're not in school to receive them. So we worked on modifying how we do that today, too. And then we eliminated the... What you see cross through is basically we're required to eliminate based on the health department and the state guidance, and release from the health department there. And let me make a comment here. Based on, you guys recall, a couple of board meetings ago, you approved us to declare our staff members critical infrastructure. And I described to you, because we had an administrator, and that's who I said we would ask them if they wanted to come in and work, and they could isolate, that we would allow them, that that would allow us. I've gotten more calls over that. I know it was in the local press, and it was sent out, you know, but I've gotten more calls on that. TEA is, for some reason, pushing that, it seems like. I just want to make sure everybody that works in Lincoln County Schools knows, we're not going to mandate you to come to work if you've been diagnosed as positive. That's not going to happen. Please report that in the newspaper that we said that. That's not going to happen. Even though some school systems may use critical infrastructure to do that, we're not going to. So maybe I won't get any more questions on that. It seems like I've had to spend a lot of time answering those questions lately. Okay, over on the right, symptoms. This would be a staff member with symptoms, and you can see there are a ton of changes in there. It seems like every day that we're getting these changes. I do want to highlight a couple of them for you. Carmen, I don't even know where to start on this. Let me say this. The last thing that they changed that I'll just try to briefly describe to you is this. In the past, if a staff member or a student had a symptom, then they had to quarantine. All right, 14 days. If they had a symptom that was any of these symptoms, 10 days, sorry, 10 days. Well, now, two days ago, I think it was, we were in a meeting which they announced to us that they are now symptoms that are considered low-risk symptoms and symptoms that are considered high risk. You can have one low-risk symptom, and basically you have to quarantine for at least 24 hours or at least be 24 hours symptom-free. So whatever that low-impact or low-risk symptom is, if you go home, 24 hours, it goes away, then you can come back. So, you know, that's, to me, that's a positive thing for us because it allows our kids and staff members to come back to work in that situation. Now, if you have two of those low-impact symptoms or one of the high-risk symptoms, then the rules are still the same, basically. And Carmen just provided you with the flow chart that they sent us in the presentation. So that's the big thing on there, and we did have to strike through a lot of things and write a few things in to try to get that into the plan. Carmen, did I miss anything on that? Okay? So I'll stop right there, though, and see if you have any questions on anything so far. All right. As we move on down, this is the student section here. Basically, it is the same exact changes. If you recall, those were the same across the board for staff and students. So that's the same, so there's no need to go through that at this point. And that is the end of the plan. So you've seen all the things as far as what was in the plan that we've either made adjustments to or are asking you to make adjustments to. Remember, asking to eliminate the hybrid and that Level 2 column, and eliminate the automatic numbers, lever points, that's across the very top of the plan. And then the other handful of things that you saw in there, most were mandated, but of course, we made the change with transportation that wasn't mandated. I don't know. I mean, I would ask if you don't have any questions that you consider approving that as a part of this meeting.
The only question I have is, where is this centralized? Because as these things are fluid and parents, are we going to have a centralized spot that this is, and have an effective date that it was last updated so parents can know and not get scrambled with the changes? Because I assume these are going to be fluid as change is change in the weeks coming, so they can know that, hey, this changed, and it's not the same.
Is, I can't see through the TV. Is John out there? Okay, John, you want to answer that?
Is it our LCDOE or is it each school website?
It's on LCDOE, not for all.
Okay, so the parents can know, and it will have an effective date on it. Okay. That's the only thing I want to make sure it didn't get scrambled from one to one. With all being said, I have a recommendation.
Can we go way down to see where the TWSAA, the wording on that?
Uh, right there. Follow. Wait, right, right there, Mr. Posey.
All right, for Level 3, what kind of threshold, if we have to go to Level 3, just case-by-case basis or...?
Mr. Bradley, what I'm thinking is case-by-case, school-by-school. Maybe even if there's a section of a school, you know, if the middle school has to shut down for some reason in one of our K8 buildings, I'm not going to eliminate that. But yeah, I don't think there's a magic number threshold now. It's basically, can we operate the school and keep it functional for the parents that have chosen to be in school? And if we can, and if it means we, as a central office, we all go to that school that day, you know, or those days, we might have to do something like that. But, you know, we'll swarm to a building if we need to to try to keep it open, and if it gets to a point we can't operate functionally, then we'll have to make a change. Good question.
Do I have a motion to accept the plan?
Make a motion, say it.
Mr. Bradley makes motion. Mr. Tucker's second. Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Seven present, one absent, motion carries. We appreciate it, and I'm sure changes will be coming as well. But we've at least went through and adjusted to what would be most relevant to us in Lincoln County.
Yeah, we appreciate that. And I want you guys to know, we meet almost daily and go through these things and talk about it, and a lot of thought goes in and discussion. And I promise you, we don't make the changes here without seeing what's needed out in the field because this is such an unknown thing. We need every opinion we can get of people that are out there on the front line. Thank you.
Next item is on there is e-learning days. I think when it come out, there's six Mondays. One is taken by Labor Day, and one is already in in-service, so you had four days. And it was texted out for everybody to look at on the recommendation was if the teachers that had children that could come with them on those Mondays. Is there any other discussion or input on that?
Well, I'll say this, that we talked about that, and we, you know, we thought that that first Monday, it was 10 days from the date we announced it, that there might be, might be teachers and employees who might need to have their kids come, you know, their school-age kids cared for on those days. But in talking, too, we found that there may be a lot more kids and grandkids and so forth of employees. And so we put the word out to the principals to be flexible, but by the second Monday, that'd be 17 days in which folks would have an opportunity to make arrangements. So if the board wants us to go backwards on that, we'll be happy to. I mean, it'll make our employees happy because, you know, our employees need every benefit we can give them right now. But that was just our thought at the time, and that's what we told the principals. So you might want to consider having a vote. And I promise you, you're not going to hurt anybody's feelings if we made one decision and you vote the other way. We're happy with that, too. So... But as of right now, more than likely, at most of our schools beginning next week, there'll be very few staff members that are allowed to bring their kids to school.
Everything I heard was very positive Monday, the way that it was.
The way that it was Monday?
I can't hear you, Devon.
Mr. Posey, they didn't have any problem with the half-wind on Monday?
Well, I mean, the teachers I talked to were very appreciative and said that it was a very productive day that they had on Monday. So, but at least in the particular school I was, I don't think very many of them brought their children.
Well, I have, I mean, I have no problem with them if they bring their children, and I'll put that as a motion and...
I think it's up to the principal and up to their...
If they need to bring them, irregardless when it is, I'll make that motion.
I would like to say to make sure that they understand they will be responsible for them. No other teacher or their teacher is going to be babysitting them that day.
You want to amend the motion in that manner?
Yeah. I make the motion that we add to Tommy's motion, that we allow the kids to come to the school, providing that the administration is all right with it, but the parent or guardian of that student would have to be responsible for that student.
I'll withdraw mine and adopt Mr. Tucker's.
Second.
Mr. Bradley's second. Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Seven one absent, motion carries. Any other thing on the e-learning days, Dr.?
Yeah, I did receive the summary from the principals. You know, I asked them to have a 2:30 Google Meet with their faculties summarize the day for me. Much of what Mr. Posey said, he heard across the district was like that. A lot of phone calls were being made, especially to virtual kids who maybe are struggling for some reason right now. So a lot of contact was made on those, on that Monday, as well as teachers, you know, getting an opportunity to catch up, plan ahead. Now, you know, I'll share out with the principals more as we get closer, I mean, as we move through these days, but I've already, you know, I've already communicated with them that the last e-learning day ought to look different than the first one as we get better and better at this. You know, I would expect kids by that last e-learning day, you know, they ought to be popping open that Chromebook, and everything is e-learning, and we're not sending stuff home. In fact, that probably should be the case by next Monday. But I think people are working into it and learning. Our teachers are learning. They needed time to make adjustments, and I've just heard nothing but positives. So I think it was a good move.
The next item on the agenda is permit substitute for COVID-19 duration. When Dr. Heath, we spoke about that, I talked with Cole Bradford, the finance director, in regard to the dollars involved, and he basically said, what we're dealing with and to get us through, that's an irrelevant expenditure at this point juncture. And I think, Dr. Heath, you can elaborate on the number you were looking at?
I was looking, I mean, it was arbitrary. I just said five. I don't, we've got five K8s, but we've got a high school, too. So if we want to do one per school and then use them as needed, and if they need to swarm to one building that's having more staff members out, then we put them all in that one building for a time if we need to. But if not, we can assign one per building and go from there, if, you know, if you so approve this. And it would be a temporary higher until, I'd say, if we're still in this COVID-19 crisis at the end of the school year, that the positions would end then. If for some reason we end before then, you know, get out of COVID, the crisis by mid-year, then it ends then. But we would not carry it over to the next year unless we see that we need them next year, and I would bring it back to you at that point.
Is this funded at substitute pay? Is it funded at educational system?
It would be substitute pay, but there would be benefits involved since it's full-time.
Any other questions? Motion to...
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Bradley makes motion.
Second motion.
Mr. Dunn's second. Roll call me, Mr. King.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Seven one motion carries. We appreciate that and looking at it, and I hope to alleviate some stresses at the schools as it happens.
Appreciate that.
Next item's current data regarding COVID-19 in Lincoln County.
Yeah, I should have removed that item when we started, and I'll tell you why. With the changes of how kids and adults are, have to isolate now or quarantine, whatever the word would be, with symptoms, we're going to change the way we keep the data. So the last data I shared with you that had the number of quarantine and kids that had to be isolated, that's the latest we have because going here forward, it looks like the only thing I'm going to really be able to keep up with is the number of positive cases that would get reported. So, you know, on your weekly report, I'll give that to you at that point in time. I don't have anything to add on that today.
Do we have anything else on the next item, any other issues?
I would just like to know how many of our virtual students have chose to come back yet to be in person.
I will send that out to you. It was a, the first day that I asked, which would have been Tuesday at our 2 o'clock meeting, the number, and it was an estimate at each school, but it added up to be about 125 to 150. My guess is it's going to go up a little bit because... My guess is it's gonna go up a little bit, because as, as our staff members had opportunities to contact the, the virtual parents and make sure they understood, you know, whatever the issues are that you're not, you know, if your child is not keeping up or whatever, then that becomes a truancy issue at some point in time. So I think we're getting some kids back because of that, but we'll, we'll see on that, so.
Was there a cutoff date for that?
Well, when we put it out, we said this week.
That's what I thought.
And then, of course, they can, anytime at the end of a grading period, so it would be at the end of this week, and then at the, at the beginning of fall break would be the next time.
Was anything else under, any other issues there?
No, I don't have any.
Board policies? Do we have anything that need to come up?
No, no, John, John looked at that for me, Dr. Fanning did, and we don't really have anything to present as far as changes or anything on that.
And then under athletics?
I did put in your folder the couple of documents from TWSSAA that are the return-to-play guidelines, just FYI for your information.
Is there any other items that we need to discuss? The, we will have a swearing-in for the new board members that were elected on September the second at eight-thirty at the courthouse upstairs. Our next board meeting is September the eighth at five o'clock with a work session prior, policy meeting, and then the regular board meeting. And the last item that I've got tonight is, Mr. Collins has served as a school board member, and he was unable to be here tonight due to the football game changing to Thursday night, and he is the owner of Sonic, and had to scramble to make accommodation, plus his son does play for the Falcons tonight. But the plaque that we'll give to Mr. Collins is to honor your service to the Board of Education, your guidance and direction as a board member, and strengthen the bond between the community and the school. Johnny Collins, Lincoln County. And we do appreciate his service that he's given, and I'll make sure that he gets us on that board, but he, again, he apologized not being able to make it tonight.
Mr. Stevens, yeah, I got one thing, one thing I failed to mention is the resolution on testing. I, I called Williamson County and talked to their superintendent, and he basically gave us permission to use the same verbiage. So we have taken the resolution that they created, that several systems in the state has now used, and that's in your packet. If you'll look at that, and at the next board meeting, if you're good with that, unless you want to approve it tonight, I don't know if you had a chance to really look at it or not, but it's a resolution that we would send to our legislators and to the governor's office regarding, it's basically a resolution in support of extending public chapter six-fifty-two, which eliminates testing for accountability reasons for this year, because our teachers need that burden off their shoulders.
What y'all's pleasure, did y'all get to look at it?
Where, where did you put it? It's not in the work session packet. It was in the, it's in the board meeting.
It was with item one B, I think, yeah, I apologize.
Y'all just hold up to the next board meeting?
Think so. I'd say hold it to the next board meeting.
We'll do that, and just review it. Fact being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Or move.
Mr. Tucker, move it.
Second.
Mrs. King, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With that, this, does anybody need a break before we go in?